And place for that.
Oh, gosh, please get visible.
Please rise.
Is that good enough?
Oh, yeah, turn it around.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on your own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call us medium, Independence School District 544 to order. Clerk, will you establish a court of justice, please?
Yes. Kirby Anderson.
Present.
Natalie Knutson. Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Hermes. Present. Stephen Vigasa.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Give her a second. Two seconds.
She's walking in the door.
Right there. Coming in hot.
Say your name really slow.
Say yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes. We have a quorum.
Thank you. I think there's just a... Somebody approve the modified agenda as presented.
So.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Agenda passes. Moving on to reports, we have Kirby Anderson, 544 Education Foundation and Finance.
No finance report today, but I do have 544 Education. We did meet on Thursday, February 21st. The major newsletter, major donor newsletter went out the week before that. We did get $3,000 in from Mindy Feeder's grandpa, who was rolling Harlow, was a grad of Fergus Falls. There was some money coming in there. We're setting up radio spots, working with Mary Dolan on her radio show every month. Once a month, it'll be one of the board members will rotate through and plug the 544 Education Foundation. The Legends Committee fundraiser, one of the big ones is the golf thing, that's scheduled for July 12th. Brand new marketing materials are going out, they'll be going out in May for the launch. Have just over a million dollars in assets, which was quite a... What just happened in the last few months, so pretty exciting. The major donor campaign is ongoing and they're considering the next all-school union, possibly in 2021, because that'll be the 150th anniversary of our school district. So that should be interesting. I did share with the group, at that point in time, we had just met that morning, they approved two finalists, and I just gave them a heads up on what our schedule is gonna be and working with the community group and then with the final interview presentations. And our next meeting will be April 11th. No meeting in March, Mindy Feeder is going to be in Hawaii, so... So that was about it. Any questions?
Any questions for Kirby? Thank you, Kirby. Melanie Cole, Special Agent Co-op, Region 1 and Activities.
Nothing new on activities and Region 1 didn't meet in February because they have their annual conference, so we skipped the board meeting that month. For Special Education Cooperative, we had a meeting today. A big consideration was our discussion about rectifying affirmative action-related pay increase for the director. As it boiled down, it was out of proportion with the staff she supervises, and so that was something we needed to correct. So that was our primary piece of business today. And just the director's setting up her site visits in all the different locations, which she does at the beginning and close of every year. So that was about it. That's all I got.
Any questions for Melanie? Thank you, Melanie. Missy Hermes, Staff Development and Curriculum Review.
Okay, the Staff Development Committee met last Monday, March 4th, and all of that fund, that $30,000 that's set aside for staff development is now depleted. So, right, it's great, so many people wanted to go to, you know, continuing education-type activities. And then, let's see, they talked about also the fall in-service, and so some of the things that are going to happen in August would be differentiated instruction and then also some tech training. And that's it on that. And then on the Curriculum Review Advisory Committee, we met in February on the 19th, and it was just a fantastic meeting. The teachers that came to talk at the meeting about... These are the people who last year had got their new curriculum. And so they were explaining how this first year of implementing that and some of the things that they had gotten, especially a lot of technology. And it was fantastic. We saw so many great demonstrations, like they had a drone that was... Let's see, that was...
Ms. Woodsky.
That's right, Dennis Woodsky talked about... And that was just a great... He had a video that the students had made with their new drone and talked about how they have implemented that. Also, a lot of... They've got 3D printing in the Industrial Technology Department. And also, I was impressed by the fact that they talked about that they had new power tools, like scroll saws, and that they're purchasing those locally at Home Depot. So I really appreciate that they're shopping local, too. Cordless drills and things like that, and a new Promethean whiteboard. Let's see, Ms. Appert talked about what they're doing in the business classes, and they also demonstrated some of the new computers that they're using in class. It was just because one of them has a keyboard, but you can detach it, and so we were all able to try that with the stylus. And, I don't know, it was really impressive. I thought it was really positive. So, the next meeting for that group is March 18th, so next Monday.
Any questions for Missy? Thank you, Missy.
You're welcome.
Natalie Knutson, Wellness Policy and Buildings and Grounds.
None of my meetings have met. The Wellness Committee meets tomorrow. A couple of things I can just report from what I know. There's an Employee Wellness Bingo Challenge going on, I believe, this month throughout the district. Food Service is joining us for a work session this evening to kind of give us an update on things they've been working on. And then I met with Kristin Tool and Jesse Thorstedt, and they're gonna be rolling out the Three Good Things Initiative again, starting on Sunday, April 7th. The last time we did it, just before the holiday, the school district brought in over 1,200 responses through that, so that will be rolling out again. And then Kristin Tool's crew is gonna kind of do the eval of the information that's brought in this time around. So, and then Buildings and Grounds, we're gonna be chatting in our work session about some things there, too.
Any questions for Natalie?
Thank you, Natalie. From my report, Lakes Country Service Co-op, we met February 14th, and I think the theme is, actually, a couple of my reports is the legislation is in session, and so there are some bills that they are trying to get passed. They have co-sponsors in both the House and the Senate, which is good, because you have to get both bodies to approve anything that you're trying to get passed through. First one is the extension of 18 online for funding. So they would like that to be extended beyond 2019. I think that has a... It seems like the legislators in both bodies have felt this is not for them and that I believe that will get approved. So they're hoping to extend that on beyond 2019, excuse me. Another one that they are trying to do is also with setting Title IV facilities... I did that wrong. Is this Title IV? Setting for facilities, education programs, and they're trying to get least likely... Some of the inner... One of the things that Outstate Minnesota tries to do that the metro area has a lot of times is try to get equal funding sources. And some of the intermediates down in the metro area get additional funding that's capped at $65 per pupil, and they're trying to seek the same kind of funding for the cooperatives that are doing Title IV, setting for facilities, so hopefully that will get passed. Another one that they're trying to get approval again is a Grow Your Own partnership with Morehead, and it's a pilot program aimed at encouraging teachers of color. And so they want to work collaboratively with Morehead to see if they can get that going. And so that's a couple of things legislatively-wise with Lakes Country Service Co-op. Otherwise, the meeting itself was pretty normal, just business, business normal, policies and stuff like that. Nothing too exciting, so. Minnesota State High School League met February 12th, and again, their lobbyists came to talk. Roger Kane, I'm not gonna try to say his last name.
Aronson.
Aronson, thank you. And they're trying to... One of the things that they had approved is that Minnesota High School League is seeking to eliminate the sunset date legislation that for excels tax exemption. And so one of the things they talked about is that the exemption has produced 7.5 million for member schools since 2006 for exemptions, and they would like to eliminate the 10-year sunset so that it would just continuously go on and up. So that's what they're asking from both the House and the Senate. One of the things they also talked about, and I did not get more information on this, is that the committee is providing updates on... One of the things is school board training requirements for Minnesota High School League. So, and I'm gonna get more information on that, but that's something that they're looking to do for school board members is just how I... Something I think in just how the Minnesota High School League, where is our role, things of that nature. And so they're looking to get that approval. One of the other things that I think people are looking for is the realignments, and there's gonna be a special board meeting that's gonna be held on February... Excuse me, Friday, March 22nd, at the Target Center during the boys' basketball state tournament, and that will review final section placement. Again, this is coming out this spring for the next two years, and so this will be the final part of it that they will go through. The other thing that they did approve that was an action item is they approved an increase in membership and activity fees for all school districts. And this has been something that's been on our radar that they have talked about. And so they are going to be changing... Currently, it's $90 for per activity and membership and activity fee. They want to continue to increase that through '23, '24 to $150 for each activity. So for example, for Fergus Falls, that's about... I mean, it's a 40% increase what they're looking for. But Fergus Falls is asking Mark to run some numbers for me so I could give us just kind of what it's gonna cost us. Right now, we're paying $2,970 to the Minnesota High School League. If everything stayed standard, nothing changed, we would move up on that... 2023, '24 school year would be $4,950. So it's an increase, but overall for, I guess, costs for what the Minnesota High School League and stuff does for school districts, I guess it's reasonable. And they haven't increased it for quite some time, and so I think that was one of the things is they wanted to increase it. They felt... So they're gonna try to generate some additional revenue, so. And that is all I have to report. Any questions for myself?
Where do they meet?
They meet down in Brooklyn Center.
Do they don't move all over the state and have meetings everywhere?
No, and I, in fact, I have asked the director, too, about streaming it, making that available so people could actually watch it and putting their agenda on, you know, like eBooks that we talk about, you know, for school districts they're going to and their agendas and their worksheets so that people around the state can actually see what they're doing and actually be able to give input instead of reading it afterwards and then trying to give input after the fact.
Right.
And because, to be honest, Minnesota High School League affects everybody in the state and the sort of, you know, for all the schools that are involved with it. I think this is one of those transparency pieces that, I guess I've advocated for it, and the technology is not that difficult to put in, so.
They could just go to meeting.com and their theme just would cover it.
Yes.
They built a new building down there a few years ago, so it's a very nice... So they should be technology, they should not be a problem.
Right, do they expect someone in Roswell to drive down there every time for these meetings? Or Fergus Falls, for that matter?
If you want to participate and actually be active and be able to voice your concern on an agenda item, the answer is yes, they do, at this point in time, anyway. So...
Okay.
But yeah, so, anyway, that's kind of one of those things. So I'm hopeful. I did talk to them during our MSBA conference and bring that up, and I thought that's something that they could do that, again, would help. I think all school boards and districts around the state would appreciate that, so. But we'll see. First thing you do is ask. Steve Vigasa, Legislative Liaison and Meet and Confer.
So, one thing I wanted to talk about was the snow day bill that was recently passed. And the reason why I wanted to talk about it is because I've had some folks talking about it to me and the community, and being newish on the school board, I didn't know this before I got onto the school board, is that the state of Minnesota requires schools to have 165 student contact days per year. And the reason why this bill came about was because of these contact days. Now, there's been some school districts that have had eight to 12 days off due to snow. And what this bill would do if it's signed down the road is to give those districts that went under the student contact days a reprieve for this year just because they had no choice, you know, safety, kind of a school safety issue. The difference for our... The difference comes in is that like our... We have, in our master agreement, we have 183 contracted days, and about 170 of those days are student contact days. So this bill actually doesn't affect the master agreement with the teachers. It affects the state requirement for us to see the students. So it's... The master agreement kind of supersedes that in a way where we're gonna follow that first. That's why we still extended our school year. So Fergus is not getting a reprieve so far. We don't know what the rest of the year is gonna be, but we're not... We're not... This bill doesn't actually affect our school days. So it's... Hopefully, that kind of clarifies things on that. It's a good thing, because there are districts that missed a lot of school, and having to make that up would be pretty rough. The other thing that... I mean, there's a lot of committee meetings happening right now. There's a lot of bills flying around, I say, because there are tons of things out there, and I'm not gonna report on all the bills because it would take all day. And I'm sure some of them are kind of out there, too, but not the ones Matt's talking about, but just saying. But the big dates to remember, March or May 1st is gonna be the day where everything's... This is it, these are the ones that are gonna be considered and they'll do their voting, and by the end of May, hopefully have some things to send over to the governor to sign and... or not. We did get a budget forecast, and actually, our budget surplus went down by almost about a half a billion dollars. And there is also a projected deficit of 11 million in fiscal year 2022, '23. But our governor has already accounted for that. So, you know, the forecasts, in my opinion, I don't get too bent out of shape about them because they can change so much by the time everything's said and done. But it is being planned for. We're not gonna have to, hopefully not have to cut things like we would think, but, you know, we'll just, we'll end up seeing what's happening. And that's all my notes on that. And then Meet and Confer has not met or conferred, so we're...
Any questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Jerry Ness.
Another acknowledgement, our girls' basketball team had a great game the other night, and they defeated Alexandria in the section finals, 43-42. And it was just as close as the score sounds. It was really a tight game, so congratulations to them. Tomorrow, it's send-off day, they go down, have practices and all those good things. They play at noon on Wednesday. They get the four seed. They will play Holy Angels, the fifth seed, and they're actually playing at Maturi, I think is how they pronounce it, Maturi, and it's right connected to Williams Arena. All of the games this year are either at Williams or right connected with Maturi. So, good for them. And I noticed our track team just came floating in here. Spring sports started today, so it's interesting there. The other thing I want to talk about is the Talent Development Committee. There's a handout right to your right, and I'll just talk a little bit about the items that are in red or blue. So we met on March 4th, and a couple of things that we really concentrated on is the universal screener versus the academic achievement. We didn't take an actual vote, but certainly, I think the committee was leaning towards doing the universal screener. Wendy Behrens from MDE, Gifted and Talented Coordinator, excuse me, and Dr. Diane Hecox, who we're having as a trainer. Absolutely, there's no question we should be doing the universal screener. What we will have to do is what's the best one, so do a little analysis on what would be the best one. And the grade level, I think, is pretty standard, is in second grade. Kerry Thompson and I had a conference call with Dr. Diane Hecox today. She's literally written the book on gifted learners, but also differentiation. We've got 50... We have 52 new teachers over the last two years and a number more since we last have been trained. So she will be coming in, and it's really the essential elements of differentiation and focusing on the diverse learner and that higher talented student. So we will be... We've got her set for Tuesday, August 27th. Very reasonable cost, which is awesome. And we'll also, staffers, will be purchasing the book that she's written on this, and that will be our PLCs. We'll be doing a year-long PLC book study on differentiation, so that's really set, that's nice. We... The blue number there, the National Association for Gifted Children, looking at resources. So each PLC will start working on this this spring and continue into the fall that they'll be looking for resources. There's lots of resources out there. And then this last one, we'll be discussing more in our work session today. Missy had just said that we have depleted our staff development funds. There is a symposium that's highly recommended on June 18th to 20th, and we will just see between mileage, hotel, meals, registration, it would be about $1,000 a person for a three-day conference. And we'll... The board will just talk about, do we want to send anyone this spring or do we want to wait till the following spring? So we'll have that discussion later. And that's what I have.
What time is the send-off on Thursday or Tuesday for the girls?
The... It depends on which part. So I think they're actually starting in the elementary schools at 8:40. The one here starts at about 10:00 to 10:00.
10:00 to 10:00?
Yep.
9:50. And that's in the Colton?
That'll be in the Colton.
Any other questions for Superintendent Ness? Thank you. Item number E, we have a resolution on the acknowledgement, and I'm gonna have our clerk read this.
Thank yous to Erin Vodava for the generous donation to the Otter Angel account, an account created to anonymously assist families unable to pay for student meals. Jordan Schrader for the donation of an alto saxophone to the Kennedy Secondary School Music Department. Otter Tail Power Company for their donation to sponsor the first robotics team. And to Julie and JP Stender for their donation of classroom furniture, wobble chairs and shelving, and many STEM activities to McKinley School in memory of their son, Anthony.
Would you want to offer that resolution?
I would, I'd like to offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We'll give that to Kirby. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes.
Yes.
Stephen Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes for his adoption.
Moving on to our General Consent Items, we have an ask for the February 25th, 2019 Regular School Board Meeting and February 27th and February 28th, Special Board Meeting, Bills and Treasury Report. No, Kirby.
Natalie and I did review the bills together, and the state of our finances is in good shape right now. We have about $7 million on hand, which is about what we're gonna be. We did review all of the checks and asked several questions of Mark, and he gave us lots of background, and we appreciate that, and so that's... Nothing really totally out of your hearing.
Personnel, Jane.
Yeah, we are still busy with personnel. It's kind of been a, yeah, a trend all year, but as far as support staff hires, we are looking forward to spring, hopefully, and are hiring our summer grounds worker, Brad Moxness. He returns from working with us last summer, which is a big blessing to have someone that already knows ropes. Along with Joanna Tisdale, she'll be doing long-term substitute registered nurse due to a leave, and that's approximately starting in April, beginning of April. As far as resignations, we have Todd Stahl, a custodian, his last day is March 15th. Certified hire, we are revving up already to get prepared for the new school year. So Brooke Johnson will be our new fax teacher. And if you remember Catherine Anderson, who was our fax teacher for many years, has switched to being our new work-based learning coordinator. So that position is... Has been filled. Certified Staff Retirement, Everett Jacobson, our elementary music teacher, and you'll see a resolution later on in the... Under New Business for his retirement. And then we have two certified staff leave of absence requests, one for Chip McAllister and one for Kathleen Rittenhour, and they're asking for a three-year leave of absence beginning with our new fiscal year, July 1st, 2019. So I request those items for approval.
Thank you. Item number four is our master agreement between the School Board of Independence School District 544, Fergus Falls, and Superintendent Jeffrey D. Drake, effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022. With that, we have a motion to approve the General Consent Item.
So move.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Are the certified staff leaves generally requested in three-year increments?
We just had this discussion with... I called TRA. Extended leave of absence have to be three to five years. And what will happen is they can shorten that up on their own, but this is what's called an extended leave, so, yes. It's anticipated that those will... The employee will end those sooner than three years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the General Consent Items, say aye.
Aye.
No, you oppose? General Consent Items pass. There is no old business, moving on to new business. We have a resolution on retirement of Everett Jacobson, whereas Everett Jacobson began his employment with the Fergus Falls Public Schools in August 1977, and whereas Everett has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past 42 years, and whereas Everett has done an excellent job as an elementary music teacher for the district. And now, therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Everett Jacobson for his 42 years of dedicated service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Let's, somebody, after that resolution, move for its adoption.
Oh, after that resolution, move for adoption.
Do we have a second? A second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Melanie Cole, yes. Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Motion is adopted.
Item number two, we have a service agreement between Lakes Country Service Co-op and the Fergus Falls Public Schools for consultant services for the school's food service program.
I'm just smiling because she's sitting right here.
They're gonna approve that.
Just walked in the door.
So effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. Do we have a motion to approve that? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
You know, I think it would be appropriate. Kirin Zid, what do you do? You know, what's your role for the Service Co-op and with Mr. Wells? You know, what's your role for the service co-op and with Mr. Wells, Lance is sitting right next to you? What are you doing?
So, well, I work as a registered dietitian with Lakes Country, and I was brought on board with kind of the direction to assure Lance, your new food service director, was fluent with the USDA regulations, rules and regulations, and just to assure that the overall meal program was compliant. So that is what we have been doing, a lot of behind-the-scenes sort of work, and we have been busy doing that, and will continue to be, hopefully. Our current contract reads to offer my services one to two days monthly, and it's been more like one this school year, and we hope to push that out to two here coming soon, but there's been some circumstances that have been difficult to get, get our work sessions and with Lance working lots of positions. So we're doing all sorts of corrective actions, so I, I am using the 2017 State Review Summary Report to guide our work, because the notations in that report indicate that there is some work to be done behind the scenes. So that's menu compliance, that's...
Stack this tall.
Special diet statements and allergies follow through there.
Pack lemons.
Yeah, our documentation for all the menu items being served, recipes, food production records, all those things.
Thank you. And Mark, if we are out of compliance, somebody might want to say, so if we're not in compliance, what happens?
We get hit with a document that says we have to do a corrective action plan and all those kinds of things, so. I think in the, probably the worst-case scenario, which nobody, I think, would ever get, but they would take mine back.
We're trying to prevent any fiscal action that would result from any non-compliance. And I submit reports monthly for our work to both Jerry and Mark.
Thank you.
I would also like to add, she's been abundantly available to me for, like, many hours of the day weekends when I have questions or ideas, and she's been very valuable to my processor as well.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Well, that concludes our regular school board meeting. Our next regular school board meeting will be Monday, March 25th, at 5:15, right here at the Otter Community Room. Following this, we will go into a work session to talk about food service, buildings and grounds, talent development committee, public and private personal data policy 406 for review, and NSBA conference sharing, hopefully can still remember that. So with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
No, I mean, I don't.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.